Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our City Commission meeting, March 21st. I would like to call our meeting to order and say we're glad you're here. We will start off with the... Do we have a quorum, please ma'am? Would you check that out?
A.G., here. Harrod?
Here.
Maynard?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Dexter?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Okay, we're going to move on to the invocation. Now, if you're able to stand, please stand and we'll recite the Lord's Prayer. But I'd like for you to remain standing after the Lord's Prayer for something else. Okay? Our Father, who art in heaven, how thou doest thy name; Thy kingdom come; Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and power, and glory forever. I would like for us to take a moment of silence in honor of one of our former City Commissioners, Marva O'Neil, who passed away recently. And she did a good job, was well-known in the community. If we could just bow our heads in a moment of silence for her. Commissioner Dexter, would you lead us in a flag salute, please?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to move two items off the agenda for discussion. That's item D and E.
D and E. Okay. Okay, go right ahead on item D.
Justin, could you advise me, what is the contingency plan? Or, John, if the cost of the contractors exceed the projected cost that you have there? I saw that the funds were set at a certain amount. And I also saw that the Shawnee Public Schools, in conjunction with the Avedis Foundation, is looking at paying those costs. So, do we have a backup plan if it exceeds that?
Backup plan would be if those funds would... Those additional funds could be provided, potentially, from city street funds. So, if our estimate is way off and we don't hit that, then we'll take a look at that and see if that would be something that we're able to contribute and meet that gap. I think we're pretty confident in the estimate based on recent bids. But you certainly never know until you get those bids back. So, this is a project that's been talked about for a long time. It's very much needed in that area to get students to the middle school. In this case, if you recall, the Avedis Foundation provided a grant to the middle school who's doing this project in conjunction with some outdoor learning space and some other active learning projects. And the city agreed to do the engineering and the construction management and then this pro bono in lieu of any other fees. And then they were providing those funds for this project. So, we're excited about it. Hopefully, the budget is correct. But if not, we'll definitely try to find funds for it.
All right. Thank you.
If that project did on a quantity basis anyhow, John, you can go back on if it really came in bad shape, couldn't you?
It's kind of hard to come back to you on some point of these because it goes from A to B. You're in a certain distance.
This isn't part of the perpetual trail or what do you call it? The sidewalks funding that we already have or the trails part?
We have the sidewalks budget. This year, we have taken anything out of it.
Okay. But it'll be part of that pool?
Okay. Does that clarify what you wanted on that matter?
That did. Thank you, Justin.
Item number E.
I noticed in... I brought this up and I know it's like beating a dead horse to death over and over. And I've heard that from several of our city council here. But Mr. Gillum's application, I noticed, had last been updated on 10/13/2014. And although I appreciate that he's willing to serve, I, in good conscience, cannot approve that application because it's not updated. And I believe anyone who is submitting for these boards and commissions should update their applications.
You understand he has been serving on that board?
Right. And I also understand that the language on the bottom of the application indicates that it was for one term and that the City Commission is to reconsider those each time that they serve. And this gentleman, I've heard, has served well and faithfully. And I appreciate that, but we need an updated application.
Well, I guess you can vote against it.
I may adopt the dissent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod and we have a second by Commissioner Hall.
With all items.
With all items.
With all items.
Okay. Let's vote. You know, Commissioner Shaw, just do one like one comment before we move on. Is that I can appreciate where you're coming from, but you know, I recall you telling me that you were going to get some people to serve on the invocation committee. And I've yet to see those. And I'll tell you why. You probably said, "It is very difficult to get people to serve on some of these committees." And the ones that do do it, we are honored to have them do it because it is very, very difficult to get. And hopefully, you're not experiencing that. But if you are, maybe you'll understand that we're just thrilled to get people to serve on some of these committees.
I believe that the two individuals I indicated are still in the process of completing their applications. And I know it only takes a few minutes, but this is truly their decision, not mine.
Right. Okay. Okey-dokey. We have it that fast. Let's move to citizens' participation. We do encourage anyone. And I see a hand coming up to speak to us and maybe enlighten us about something. And we do have some rules, but you just come right on up. And if there's anyone else after this, young lady, then you need to state your name into the microphone and please sign in. Please, ma'am.
My name is Beverly Davis. And let me sign that in. First, I apologize for not having enough handouts for all of you. My little printer just can't quite do that. And I'm not sure if I'm supposed to address the mayor?
Address me and the whole group.
Okay.
Mayor and the City Commission.
Ladies and gentlemen.
That's fine.
My concern is the red cedar trees. I am very allergic to the red cedar trees. The people that I sing with at First Christian Church, they're in the same shape I'm in. Most of the other singers of the world seem to have this problem. So, that's my very first concern. But in addition to that, I've done some other research. We were very lucky last year that we were not in a drought situation. I think that was very fortunate. But I don't think we can rely upon that. I found an article that was online that was written by the Shawnee News Star dated May the 7th, 2013, where the city planned to develop a red cedar tree removal plan. And I was wondering if that plan had been in process, implemented, stalemated somewhere, something like that. So, that would be a question that I have, is where do we stand on that? A second thing that I would like to bring to your attention is probably the more concern of the red cedar tree, and that is how much water it consumes. And again, apologize for having only one handout, so...
I'd give it to our city manager.
Thank you. Okay. I did some quick figuring based on the Shawnee Twin Lakes website. Lake One has 16 miles of shoreline. Lake Two has nine miles of shoreline. That's a total of 25 miles of shoreline. And what that means is that if the red cedar trees consume anywhere from five to 40 gallons of water per day, depending upon the size, I think that the gentleman can read at the bottom of the paper, that's a lot of water. Somewhere around $2 billion, I mean, 2 billion gallons of water per year if we cannot control the red cedar population. So, then, I just thought, you know, give it a shot. Let's see what the Farmer's Almanac is going to say. Because last year, they kind of got it right.
Oh, really?
And I'm hoping this year... Well, I don't know that I'm hoping this year they've got it right. I'm hoping that it is somewhat correct. Again, I'll give you a copy of this. And this little graph that I'm looking at, it shows temperature and it shows precipitation. And so far, as far as precipitation shows, it's not looking good for March, April, May, and June. As a matter of fact, Farmer's Almanac is predicting, in our particular area of Oklahoma City and Texas, not very much rain. So, I think that's a bit of a concern for all of us as far as whether or not we will have to go back to restricted watering and stuff like that. So, then, again, I went online and found... You know, the internet's just full of stuff. And I found some frequently asked questions about the eastern red cedar trees. They are native to Oklahoma. Originally, they were controlled by the Native Americans by burning them. But with the increase of population and with the increase of urbanization, that's kind of out. And we all know, from looking at the TV, whenever a cedar tree catches fire, poof, it goes. And so, that's some information about that. According to what I read in the News Star, a machine has been purchased and some attachments to some machines have been purchased. I don't know if they are being used or if it can be used. I don't know if you have the personnel. I know that I would truly appreciate it if we could get rid as many of the red cedar trees as possible. And if you all are not willing to do that, if there is money, which I know the economy is bad, I found a site. It's called the Oklahoma Eastern Red Cedar Registry Harvesters, of people who actually go in and take care of the trees, of course, for a price. But at the same time, if they can use the trees to benefit their business, which is making logs out of them, then there's a trade-off there that could be sparked. However it is, you know, is the most cost-effective thing to do. So, that's what I'll hand to you also. I'm sorry the print is so small. That's just the way it came. So, that's really all I have to say. And I realize you can't answer anything. And I realize you're not going to tell me anything unless you would like to tell me anything. But so, I'm just bringing that concern to your attention to let you know that I am concerned about that.
We do appreciate you bringing this and your research. And you've done a lot of work on this. And I do believe, under our commission comments, we'll get our city manager to respond in that manner. So, if you want us to stay here just a little bit longer, it's going to be kind of a short meeting.
It'll be a short meeting? Okay. Because I just have a limited amount of oxygen with me.
Yes. And we'll have him address that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Very well done. Any other citizens? Okay. Not hearing any others. I would like to go to item number three, presentation by city manager to employee of the month, Danielle Turner.
Thank you, mayors and mayor and commissioners. My pleasure this evening to introduce to you Danielle Turner. She is the employee of the month for March. Dani has been with the City of Shawnee since May of 2012. She works in engineering, which includes the street and traffic departments. She's quick to answer a question or get information to you and is knowledgeable in her duties and able to assist others in the department as needed. She's always friendly and helpful with citizens that call with complaints or requests. She's more than deserving for employee of the month. And for me personally, having worked previously in the Annex Building and working with Dani, I can attest to all of those qualities that I just read. Dani grew up in Bethel and loved sports of all kinds, especially going to Dodgers games. Her life revolves around her family, her husband Kevin, her three daughters, Casey, Chrissy, and Julie, and seven grandkids, Keaton, Kyson, Carston, Thomas, Sebastian, Bliss, and Jensen. With all the grandbabies, she doesn't have as much time for playing softball
She's not old enough to be a grandbaby.
or basketball as she once did. Dani, thank you so much for your service. Congratulations.
Thank you. Item number four, consider of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Lump Sum Paying from Defined Benefit Plan for Jeremy Brown. Will entertain a motion in this matter?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
This is a routine?
Yeah. That's the right routine. Okay. Motion carries. Item number five, acknowledged sales tax report received March 2016.
Well, I think we're one of the few communities that were up. Our sales tax, we collected $1,316,000. We were only up $23,000 from last year, but... Or 1.8%, which is better than being down. But for the fiscal year, we're up 4% overall. And our use tax, our budget was like $1.2 million. We've almost met that so far this year.
Already.
Already, huh? Good news. Good news. Thanks goes to the people that come here from out of town and the people that live here, spending their money.
And I think on the use tax, all the construction is starting to catch up.
And the construction, yeah.
Yeah. But we have to remember, that's a one-time.
Yeah.
It's all right. We'll take it.
We'll take it.
Thank you so much for that good report. We are blessed, folks, based on what the newspapers say. Item number six, consider bids for the auditorium HVAC project.
Mayor and commissioners, about two weeks ago, we received bids in for the auditorium heat and air project. We received one bid and we done a little investigating into the bid and into why we only got one bid. A lot of our local air conditioner companies are kind of, you know, just kind of a small company. Some of them don't have a whole lot of employees. Busy time of the year coming up. They said it'd be kind of hard to keep some of... Or some guys on the job all the time. And we also talked to the company that did bid the project and did come up with some cost-saving areas. And one of the big ones was pulling out part of the bid that was not important to the operation of the project, such as the fencing area that would hide all the units behind the auditorium. But with advice from legal counsel and some urging from the engineer that designed the project, we think that it would be best to just rebid the project and maybe put the fence on and add alternate that they could bid on it if they wanted to. And just keep the auditorium heat and air as one project and the fence as another project. And take some of those cost-saving measures and throw them into the scope of work that we had designed and see what comes out of this one. And maybe we might get... If we keep it just strictly heat and air, we may get a few other bids that we're hoping. So, it is staff's recommendation to reject all the bid from Hardisty Team from Oklahoma City in the amount of $633,028 and to rebid the auditorium heat and air project.
Somebody have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Motion carries. Okay. Any new business?
No, sir. No new business.
Okay. Commissioners' comments is the next section. Item number eight.
I have one comment. You know, we're coming into a tornado season. This kind of concerns me because in 2010, we had a tornado out of the Shawnee.
Really?
And in 2013, three years later, we had another big tornado.
Are you predicting another?
And this is three years later, so I'm a little nervous. Could you remind... Justin, can you have someone remind us of where the tornado shelters, the public ones, are here in Shawnee?
I can. Let me see if they're...
I'm working some of them.
Just going to offer to do it the next meeting. Mr. Lynch wasn't here, but he is here.
Oh, okay.
Meeting, mayor, commissioners, the city owns a small cellar, which we have in Boy Scout Park, which would hold about 50 to 75 people, generally designed as a neighborhood cellar for that neighborhood to take shelter in. The North Rock Creek School, when school is not in session, is offered up as a public shelter. Again, would haul probably around 150 to maybe 200 folks. This is the new building, the junior high building, in the dressing room facilities at the junior high building at North Rock Creek School as two advertised public shelters that we have. The good news is, when you look at a substantially constructed, single-family dwelling, if you get to the center portion of that facility in your home, as many walls and rows between you and the outside as possible, you have the best chances of survival from that storm. Approximately 0.01% of all the tornadoes that occur in Oklahoma during a year are F-5 tornadoes. Now, obviously, if you happen to be in that one, that's not good. But the good chances are that the majority of the tornadoes that occur are F-3 and below. And so, if you're in a substantially constructed building following those rules, you have the best chances of survival that you have. And even as we saw in 2013, in the storm right across from the Moore Hospital, where the F-5 went through, there was a family that took shelter in the center portion of their home and that... In a bathroom in that center portion of their home, and they survived that storm. So, again, we're always concerned about people waiting until the last moment to try to get out and find shelter somewhere. So, having a plan in place is excellent, and so I appreciate you bringing that up. Again, as we move into time for people to think about where they're going to be and to have that plan is important, to look at well-constructed buildings for shelter and to make sure that they have a plan for how they're going to get weather information. In addition to having a weather radio at their home, if they have an alerting device on their phone, so wherever they might be traveling, they can have that information. And all of the radio... Or, I'm sorry, all of the television stations and several of the radio stations in the Oklahoma City area offer apps where you can receive that warning. You can also get an app from the Red Cross, from the National Weather Service, from the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management, where you can receive that warning. And in Shawnee, we offer a mass notification system, which you can sign up for by contacting our office if you're not signed up. Or you can go online to the city website and click on the Blackboard Connect button and sign up for that. And we will notify you by phone, by email, by cellphone. And then that also sends out text messages to folks, so they can get that message. So, thank you.
Is there something on shawneeyouk.org website that describes that process that you just mentioned on how to sign up for Blackboard?
Yes. There's a button in the lower left-hand corner on the citizens' page where they can... Of the city website, and they just push that button and they fill out the information. It comes to our office and we get them set up on the system. Thank you.
I didn't want to get into elections and all that, but I did hear Dr. Moore say, so that you know, if this I-93 bond
Passes.
is continued and passes, there were two or three
I think almost every school.
Every new... Every school is going to have a shelter in it for the children, which is pretty incredible to me.
If it's building a new shelter.
Are they?
Sequoia has one, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. So, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
For those in the past that have not been open to the public.
Right. But at least during school hours and all that, we'll be protected there.
Yeah.
If that bond passes.
That's our concern.
Any other comments?
I have a couple of comments. The last time we had met, I'd made a comment in regard to Jimmy Zag and customer service. And I took the opportunity and went and met with the management of Jimmy Zag. And they assured me that customer service is definitely something that they want to do and keep. And at the time, when calls were being called in, apparently, they were short of staff. And they said they'd had a number of individuals who had also indicated the same thing. So, I want to encourage all, go out to Jimmy Zag. They're great. I appreciate that they are customer service-oriented. On another note, on March 18th, the Masonic Lodge of Shawnee and the Absentee Shawnee Dental held a fundraiser for baby Daisy. Baby Daisy had a viral infection that destroyed her heart in January, and in February, it was replaced. She's now in the St. Louisa Hospital, so please keep her in your prayers. Thank you.
Any other comments?
On that, what Lisa was talking about, I'm not sure, but we had served about 80 people and it was $8 apiece. So, we had about a hundred and something dollar donation beforehand, so I don't know how much money was raised. But we had the lodge where whatever was raised will match that. So, if it's $500, then we make it $1,000. If it's $400, we make it $800 or whatever it is.
Very good. Okay, other comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to try to keep it short. Cedar trees. I don't like cedar trees either. I wish we could get rid of all of them. But here in town, most of the cedar trees are on private property, not on city property, right here in town. At the city lake, we only have about 5% of the watershed. So, even if we wiped out every cedar tree, it's not going to really help us on water, unfortunately. Right? So, most of it's on private property. But we sure would want to encourage the citizens who own their private property to get rid of cedar trees because they... I think that they're a big fire hazard. They ruin the environment, the natural habitat for a lot of other wildlife. But we just can't afford to go wipe out a lot of cedar trees on private property. Can't do it. And at the city lake, it's not going to really help us.
Okay. Appreciate those comments.
And let me add to that. I regret that you have an allergy to the red cedar, but as a person of tradition, us as Native Americans certainly respect that tree and what it means to our culture.
Okay. Mr. Erickson, I'll let you in, and I have a couple of comments if you want to address anything about that cedar tree.
Appreciate that. Yes, as Ms. Davis stated, the city does have some equipment that is able to remove cedar trees. As Commissioner Hall indicated, the biggest challenge is that many of those trees are on private property and we cannot expend public funds on private property. However, we do have areas at the lake that are public property, put in public parks. And we are... We do plan to remove cedar trees from public parks this spring. And then we look to regroup in the fall. After the primary department that would do this would be the Parks Department and...
this would be the Parks Department, and during the growing season, it's, they're very, they're stretched very thin staff-wise to, to, because of the maintenance responsibilities at, at the various parks and facilities. But I think our, what we hope to do is do an initial removal this spring at the public parks, get an idea on resources that it takes, how many, how much time and effort does it take per acre, or, or whatever standard, and then be able to maybe do something more substantial in the fall. But unfortunately, it is, it is going to be maybe a drop in the bucket because of the, of the overall size of the watershed, but...
Are you talking about using city personnel to do it, and...
Yeah, and our city parks out there and everything, getting rid of cedar trees out there, for sure.
Okay, just the people that are, that work for the city?
Right. Yes, sir.
The site that this young lady was so nice to bring us about, the people that would maybe come in and for a minimal fee, I wonder if we would share that with the press, and if the press hopefully would say, and I'm not telling them what to do, I'm just saying, maybe they could put out a deal that says, if you wanna get rid of cedar trees on your property at a reasonable price, maybe they could reach out to these people here and get some communication going in that matter for the private property, if people choose to do that.
Well, she got it off the internet, it might not even be legit, I mean...
Well, I trust her.
No, it is legitimate, yes.
That's what I was gonna say.
I'd love to research that area.
Linda, contact them.
Yeah.
Along those same lines, people might, the private landowners might know that they can contact the Natural Resource Conservation Service also, that they offer a service, but they run, they only do it once a year, it's open for a certain period of time, and eventually they run out of money, so people have to get their bid in early, but private property owners have that avenue too, and it wouldn't hurt for, if our news media was, had some space in their newspaper to kinda cover that again.
And we might add a little bit of that to our website, huh? If, if we could, so that when people, we just tell them that, like, we get to say, ma'am, what can we do about the cedar trees, just tell them to do whatever, okay, on their private property. Justin, you have something?
Hey, I wanna, I stopped, kinda walked down Main Street today, the two blocks are to close, and they're pouring curbing and moving right along, so they had a lot of people working today, getting ready for again in the morning, so it's really looking good. That's not, I mean, and I don't know who's supervising that, but it's really moving along.
Great, I just have two things. One is the event, the Red Bud City, Night on the Bricks, is April the 15th. You need to log that on your calendar and tell everyone about it. Downtown Shawnee, it's gonna be a community meal, okay, and gathering, and it's made possible by support of VSI, Avitas, and the CPN is doing a big job in helping out on this thing, so that you know, everybody, they're really helping out on it with, I think they're furnishing the tables and doing all of that stuff, so they really stepped up in helping with this, and they're safe events for families, SEF, and the city. So it, it's gonna be a big event, and we really need to all look forward to that on April the 15th, that's, what is that, tax day?
Yeah.
So when you come down the...
Where do you get tickets for it?
I remember it.
You can get a free meal.
Where do we get tickets for it?
I don't think you have to have tickets, do you?
You do have to have tickets, it's a free event, but, but, and there's, there's distribution centers around town, and I'll email that information out to commissioners.
Okay, or at the chamber or something.
Okay, good question, good question. One other thing, the Police Foundation banquet is this Friday, March 25th, and it's an excellent event, and all officers are able to go, thanks to the support, the reason we'll take our officers off the street, and they're able to go, and I maybe we shouldn't publicize this. But, but the good news is, the County Sheriff's Office and CPN has really stepped up in this matter to furnish their police to cover our city. So thanks to the Sheriff's Department and the CPN for, who will cover the city calls during this event, so I wanted to point that out and tell you that these are two good events.
And mayor, one final thing, on Friday is our retreat, city retreat, I would like to encourage anyone to come out for that and take part, this is our process of getting some input. We will, of course, be discussing those items among ourselves, but we certainly, as a city, would encourage any of you that would like to, to bring a point up that needs addressed in a long-term manner, the red cedar trees being one, other items that are out there. I certainly hope that we look at our master plan and look at long-term planning for, in respect to our planning commission, and, and those who are running for office, perfect opportunity to come out and have input. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Just, yeah, just one. Justin, would you put on the, on the next agenda, like, have, I'd like for Don to come and talk to us about something more like in-depth about, like, what our plans, like, what we could do, what civilians can do in case of an emergency. I mean, I, I know that he was kinda rushed to just spill it out right then, I'd like to have it kinda, maybe a little demonstration or something, slideshow, if you don't mind.
Working on that, thank you, sir.
Yeah, also, I agree, we, we probably oughta do something to eradicate the, the cedar trees, and it'd be nice to, to sorta see if we could partner, like, we've, we've seen other groups get together and partner with this, maybe we could, like you've done, partner with other places and landowners and the city, maybe could organize it, and we could go out there and maybe make a week of it or a couple of weekends of it, and, I don't know, roll up our sleeves and, and get, get rid of the trees, so, anyway, just my thing.
Any other comments? If not, I will adjourn our city commission meeting, and I will call to order the Shawnee Airport Authority. We do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dykstra, let's vote. Motion carries, any new business?
No, sir.
Then I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and call the municipal authority to order and declare that we do have a quorum. I will, item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, two...
Second.
And a second, okay? Let's vote. Any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Motion carried, by the way, I'm sorry. No new business, okay, I will say this, we had a new young lady here on the computer, and what a great job you did tonight, I tell you. Once again, our city staff continues to excel, so I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's better.